Press record now.
Great, no worries. Filter myself then.
Yeah.
Appropriately.
Well, thank you for coming in and being part of our process.
You bet. Thank you for doing this.
Yep. Since it was only a couple hours since we last saw each other.
Yes, exactly.
This time, we'll just get right to questions.
Sure.
What do I have to start? Do you want to give a little elevator pitch about why people should support you?
Sure. So I'll start with Aunt Tammy Panning. I've been a county commissioner since 2007. And it's been an incredible journey. I love the ability to serve our community and I want to continue to do that. Why? Government works at a glacial type of speed. So things that I started working on 10 years ago are in show now coming to fruition. A good example would be looking at our non-resourced lands, the lands in which have been what we consider to be mapping errors around Deschutes County. What does that mean for us? Well, it doesn't mean that those areas would be considered next for high density. But it does mean that first of all, from a water conservation perspective, individuals might not be trying to keep their farmland green. We could actually rezone that in another way to where maybe they could, it could be MUA 10 or something that might be able to afford different types of land value and use of the land as well. Health services, we are on the forefront of being able to look at our mental health system. And that's something that I've been asked to be a part of. Initiatives that county commissioners, through the amount of time that you serve and the relationships that you develop, you get a chance to be at the table to really affect change statewide, which definitely influences the ability for us to meet the needs of our own community. So I want to serve another four years. I love what I have a chance to do with our community and that's why I'm running.
Great.
The, I'm gonna kind of do these questions in reverse order, what I thought. But, you know, most of, as the job description has changed and growth has increased in the county, from an outside perspective, it would seem like land use issues are now occupying far more time than they used to. And I wonder if you could just speak to the change, the way that your position has changed since the time you came in? And do you, is that an accurate reflection, land use, I mean, land use being, you know, the majority of your job description?
So the role of a county commissioner is both legislative and quasi-judicial. So land use actions, property rights is probably 75% of the time that we spend as a commissioner. So you are correct. Has that changed? When I first got elected, Measure 37 and Measure 49 were online. And those were the property rights bills about land use ability prior to Senate Bill 100 in the state of Oregon. If you owned your land before some of those laws came online, would you be able to use your land the same now? So my day one became about land use and my background was in health services. So commissioners need to make sure that they are up to speed on understanding our code, understanding the law, and how you apply that in an objective manner. Deschutes County is a county of first impression in a lot of ways. So a lot of the land use issues that come to us, other counties are not necessarily dealing with. We have the second largest unincorporated area in the state of Oregon. And so we have this urban and rural mix that makes us really unique. And we love that about ourselves, but we also find that to be, I as a commissioner, one of our greatest challenges. So how we address that is through being educated, making sure that we are objective. And then it is a huge part of what a county commissioner does and should do.
What do you, what do you feel the balance should be between the role that the county commissioner plays in county as opposed to the role that the county commissioner plays at the state level?
Certainly it's important to be responsive and present for your constituents. So our board meets every Monday and Wednesday. And then we hold office hours just like anyone else would in an office setting. Getting out to community, often we wouldn't be sitting behind a desk, but could be meeting in Sisters or Lapine or wherever. One of the important things that I feel is that we often feel critical of the state and the legislature and what they are doing in terms of setting policy that maybe is a one-size-fits-all. So I have made it a priority of my own to get involved as a county commissioner at the state level in setting policy that directly affects our livability and the economic vitality of our county. So I see that as really important. If we, and I've said this 100 times, but if we are not at the table, I've watched us be on the menu time and time again. And we can sit back and say that, you know, that darn state is doing all these things to us. Or we can be at the table informing those decisions and helping them to understand how policy shifts at the state could directly affect our community in a negative way. So if we are able to help guide that, I can't think of anything that better serves our community.
What are some of the specifics, specific ways that you as a commissioner interact at state level?
So a couple of ways. One, the Transportation Commission. So the Oregon Transportation Commission oversees the Department of Transportation, which sets the policies for the state of Oregon around transportation. Things like access management is critical to the success of a community. Being able to address things like congestion, being able to address things like safety. Those policies are set at the state level and I currently chair that commission. Next, I have sat on the Oregon Housing Stability Council, which sets out the statewide housing plan. And we are developing the first statewide housing plan of Oregon. We've operated off the tenure plan to end homelessness, which was a statewide effort. But we haven't had a strategic vision really for how the state is going to invest limited tax credits and limited resources to be able to meet the needs of community. And so being able again to look at what target populations we need to be addressing, how rural communities, small capacity communities, being able to access funds. And again, setting those policies of who is able to actually access funds and how we get those dollars into community is critical to success.
You mentioned the tenure plan to end homelessness. Do you think that was a success?
Well, when I first started as part of the tenure plan to end homelessness, one of the questions was, will we ever end homelessness? And the answer was no, but it's better than saying, we're gonna try to end homelessness. So what happened right after we wrote the tenure plan to end homelessness was the recession. And so the housing mix looks vastly different than it does today. And so that also was a statewide initiative that was led by the federal government down into community. And I think what we lost was, at the state level, the oversight of being able to assist communities and working on those plans. The grassroots ground level push from the community was critical. But at the time of the economic recession, there just wasn't capacity on the ground to influence how that work continued. So it quite frankly sat on the shelf. What did it do? It helped communities though identify what gaps they have in their community. And so for us, looking at shelter beds that are necessary, emergency housing that's necessary, looking at the mix of housing that's needed to meet all levels, those things are still relevant. So now we're taking that information, putting it into the statewide housing plan and determining how do we go forward as a state in addressing affordability and affordable housing.
Are there any specifics about the affordability piece that you'd like to share? I'm just curious about that.
Well, there's, well, there, if we look at workforce housing and we look at affordable housing. So if we're looking at tax credit projects or if we're looking at kind of the development to be able to have single-family homes or homeownership, the delta in between from the state is huge. A lot of the mix that we had on the market back in 2008 looked vastly different than it does today. We don't have the rental market to be able to offset. So if the question is, you know, what areas should we be targeting? Depends on where you are in the state of Oregon. For us, clearly, we have about, just in the city of Bend, we miss, right now we're missing about 5,000 units. And that's it, all mixtures, to actually have housing that's going to meet the needs of our communities. And so we, right now, are addressing some of the issues around veterans homelessness and veterans housing. That's certainly a critical access point. But I think you could say that really there isn't a part of our mix of housing that isn't in need of additional funding.
I guess I was just curious more about the specific steps to address that gap as opposed to knowing that.
Oh, sure. Well, from a state perspective, we don't have enough funds to address every need. So what we're trying to do, and we have a retreat on the 26th, which is next week, to take a look at the initial findings within the statewide housing plan and try and target certain areas within community. So what we do right now is that if you're a developer and you're providing low-income housing in a community, you apply and we put you through a process. What we don't right now have is a look at what are the targeted, most critical needs within community. So it's applicant-driven versus vision-driven in terms of how, we can be all things to all people, but we won't be able to meet the outcomes that we're trying to achieve. So this is more of a strategic fashion. It also is looking at other ways that we can, working with the state agencies such as ODOT, such as the Development, so DLCD, the Department of Land Conservation and Development. What lands do they also have within community that we might be able to actually put into affordability? Meaning Habitat for Humanity was able to take ownership of some land that ODOT had as surplus. So they, that type of conversation statewide, because it's a mix of, in Bend, the cost for land is incredibly extraordinary. So it's cost prohibitive to build affordable. If we have lands that are owned by the state of Oregon and we match those with the dollars that the legislature has put forward, then it frees up the ability for a development to go forward.
Does that tie into some of the shifting of the exterior lands in Deschutes County that you mentioned at the beginning of your pitch here?
Well, one of the challenges, we have mapping errors. And EFU land, high-value land in the state of Oregon, is the most restrictive zone that we have. The same EFU land zone is the same in Bend, or Deschutes County rather, is the same that is in the Willamette Valley. So Yam Hill County that's growing grapes. So we need to recognize, in my opinion, what some of those mapping errors look like. Back in 1978, '79, when we put in our first comprehensive plan, there were lands that were left and in our commissioner's journals from that time was for another day, we'll deal with it later. Well, now is later. So we have lands that we are protecting such, and suggesting that they're high-value farmland, but the soils classifications don't meet that need. So how can those lands be used differently? Does it mean that they would go into high density? No, because there isn't another zone that you would walk down that would provide in Oregon a high-density rezoning from an EFU. But does it mean that we could be looking at those lands to be able to allow a second dwelling on them? Possibly. Does it mean that we could be looking at maybe accessory dwellings? Possibly. That was something that the legislature looked at last year. But we have these areas around our fastest-growing city in, well, really in the West Coast, that maybe we could be using differently, but right now have been locked down into this, that they are high-value farmlands conversation. So what would it look like next? It would be a conversation with our community as to what they would want and certainly with the state of Oregon as to what they would allow. There is a pilot project right now, House Bill 4079, that's doing just that. They're looking at two pilot projects in the state of Oregon where they would take 40 acres and allow that to be used for, I think it's 30, has a minimum of 30% affordability. And it's land that's not within an urban growth boundary, which again goes back to Senate Bill 100. And it can be lands, so the county has land in Redmond that we would be willing to partner with the city on. So you have some market rate housing, you have low-income housing, you have mixed, you know, mixed units. So you would have multifamily housing, single-family housing, you, just a multitude of different types of housing within a 40-acre period. Planned development, think kind of maybe Northwest Crossing-ish. But the benefit of a developer being able to use land, first of all, that's available. Second of all, that's low-cost or no-cost. You would use the revenue generated from the market rate to be able to offset the cost of building affordable housing and then be able to add to that mix. So the county's perspective in that would be, we would want to not just use the minimum. We would want to request that they have more affordability than just the pilot minimum. And so those are ways that, so this buffer of what does it mean with those non-resourced lands, which every land has resource? How do we get the best resource out of that in particular while we have a housing crisis?
Interesting.
I'm gonna shift the questioning over to what seems to be the most popular topic at the county commissioner race, marijuana.
Yes.
And, you know, at the debate last night, there were a lot of numbers thrown around regarding the amount of revenue that is coming in. Do you feel that revenue, and I know that revenue hasn't been spent yet, but what do you feel the revenue should be spent on? And is it, as a group, do you feel like you're spending in the right areas?
So we will receive about 476 annual, 476,000 annually. Is that a lot of revenue? No. What will that be able to provide for the county? A lot more in terms of enforcement. Another side that we have a conversation, we, sorry, my phone is ringing. So those funds, we've already had a conversation as a board to move forward with hiring an enforcement officer. And we are partnering with the city of Bend of bringing on another enforcement officer as well. Those individuals would be part of the Central Oregon Drug Enforcement Team. That's important because they have the ability to work with the code team as a whole. They also would be able to work with the district attorney's office. We have one single point of contact there as well. It's an effort to get our arms around some of the illegal activity that's going on and those that might be on the medical side that are unregulated respectfully and making sure that they're within compliance. So that would take probably 200,000 or so of that. The remainder is left to be for discussion. A couple areas that I see that are critical. One, offsetting the costs that it takes for our community development department to actually process applications. We are a county that, because it is a land use, they need a LUX, a land use compatibility statement in order to move forward with an application, many applications. And actually, I can't think of anything really that doesn't get appealed in Deschutes County. We have this urban-rural mix. And so many people want it to look the same as when they moved here and that's just not what growth looks like. So we do typically get appeals on most every land use action that we take. There's a cost associated with that. By law, we are only allowed to take a $250 appeal fee. So to appeal a decision that a hearings officer has granted is $250. Some would say we should raise it, but that's dictated by state law. So what does that mean in terms of cannabis and marijuana? It means that we will probably need to offset some of those costs with that revenue. And then another place is working with our prevention team in public health and looking at gaps within our system of education and awareness. How do we make sure that we keep what's illegal for those under 21 out of the hands that are under 21? So it would be public health, education, and prevention. Working on the community development side to offset the costs and cover the costs that are associated with processing. And then also the enforcement piece.
There seems to be some disagreement about whether that revenue is covering the cost of management. Where do you fall on that?
The revenue coming in from what we're charging for permits?
Not just for permits, but for, you know, people who are extrapolating as much as they can about what it means to have marijuana farming in the county. Is the 442 or 470, as you're saying? Is it, is it a benefit for the county financially or is it a negative for the county currently?
You know, I've never looked at an industry to say whether it benefits or it hinders us from a financial aspect. Cannabis is legal in the state of Oregon, so it's our job to make sure that we don't discriminate on any new industry. So would I say the same if we were looking at, you know, any other industry coming in? For me, we do need to cover our costs, which is why we just had a conversation last week to increase the permit cost. So it will be an additional cost for those coming in to go through the land use process to be licensed for production. Typically, that's not where I like to be of charging more, but for this one, we want to cover the actual cost of service. But for the county as an entity, are we generating enough revenue? For us, it was never about following the dollar. It was about following the law. And we want to partner with the state, which they, we are agents as the state essentially, offering public health services, education and outreach to the schools and et cetera. So I don't know if we have enough revenue at this point because I think it's moving so quickly in terms of what the needs are. One thing that I have said though, from a state perspective, I feel that it was a bit of a ready-fire aim in bringing on an industry without the ability to truly wrap our arms around the enforcement piece. The public health side, I think, is an important one because, you know, we have a high onset of underage drinking in Deschutes County, underage tobacco use. Our marijuana use is about the state average. But those are things that I think as a community, we need to make sure that we are investing in those areas in which we keep our kids safe. But in terms of this industry, I can't tell you whether we have enough revenue yet because I think it's, we're still trying to figure out what the cost associated will be.
What, I mean, anytime you have an enormous change come in like this, I mean, there's gonna, I mean, our position has been, it's gonna take time to work out the kinks. What do you think's a realistic timeframe for getting proper regulations in place and getting to a point where, you know, county staffers as a whole feel like, okay, we've, you know, we've got our arms around this now?
Well, the challenge is, as we sit here today, there are some that are working with legislators over in Salem to take away our right to have regulations. And so any change that we make to the regulations that we currently have will need to withstand an appeal. And quite frankly, I don't know if they are an overreach in terms of being too restrictive. In Oregon, we have the right to farm, which protects crops. This has been deemed a crop by the state legislature. So we have the Oregon Farm Bureau questioning whether we can have the regulations we have today. We have the growers who feel that they're having to go through a process that is more arduous and onerous on them than any other county in the state. There's a reason for that. Again, getting back to that rural and urban, we want to define balance. So I would say not everyone on that side is happy either. And then you have the community in the middle of the rural residents who are feeling the impact because that's where most of the growing is occurring. So the question of when will that all shuffle itself out? Part of it is outside my control in terms of the legislature. But in terms of where we are as a county and what I have authority over, I think if we look at some of the density and try to come up with something that helps, cannabis will be, well, the hemp side is an outright allowed use. So the county does not regulate hemp. We have about seven hemp farms right now in Deschutes County and they are on the rise. So individuals smelling marijuana, seeing the plants, that will occur without any regulation because that is by law how that's set up. So in Deschutes County, growing marijuana on the recreational side needs to be indoors. So you shouldn't be able to see it, smell it, hear the fans. I mean, we really have been restrictive. The only thing that I could say that may need to be adjusted is the concentration of those approvals in certain areas. Water patterns are important to the watering of the plant. So some areas like Alfalfa and Tumalo have more of a density than the other areas. But again, we have 14 in Deschutes County right now. Many land use approvals that we have approved right now have not gone forward to the OLCC. It's my understanding the market itself is starting to kind of lighten and soften and work its way out. So it's not a linear question, or a linear answer to your question. There are so many variables. I hope in the next two years, one full legislative session to where if there's any shuffling that needs to occur, it happens in '19. And then the county going forward with what we feel we need to do alongside the community. That'll be happening this year. So two years. I wish it were yesterday, but, because you know, it's a very emotional issue. And I have to base my decisions on the law. So that emotion is important, but it's not a finding of fact that I have to use.
I guess I want to piggyback off that a little bit. I'm just thinking about, you're describing, okay, you've got, you know, you've got the hemp side, you've got the health authority side, which you are allowed to have purview over those, I understand, right?
So the medical.
The medical side.
We are not.
Okay.
So we're not allowed to have, so the medical side is overseen by the Oregon Health Authority. And because it's HIPAA-protected information, a challenge that we have is, when we first put in our regulations about a year and a half ago, at that time, there were 1,749 licensed medical marijuana growers. There are 984 right now. So the county is not allowed, we're not privy of that information to know where they are and to know whether they are operating within the license that they've been given through OHA. OHA oversees over 20,000 licensed medical marijuana growers and they have two individuals that are able to do the enforcement. So that's one of the reasons why bringing on local enforcement will be able to assist in that. The law enforcement, the district attorney.
So they will be able to assist in the health authority, or in the medical grow regulation and checking on them, code enforcement kind of things?
In a way. So the way that it'll work, we asked OHA to send us a list, not us, but law enforcement who's privy to that information, a list of where the medical marijuana grow sites are, what type of license they have, how many plants should they be allowed? So when we get a complaint, we know what is lawful for that individual, both the protection of the person who's licensed and the neighbors who have questions.
When you say "we" in this context, are you talking about law enforcement? Are you talking about code enforcement, or your code officers or?
So right now, it would be code officers that want to be able to do that. The reason why that's not working is because from.
They don't have access to the list.
They don't. So the district attorney and the sheriff just asked OHA for that list. They were denied. So they sent every address in Deschutes County to OHA, asking them to confirm or deny which of those addresses have a license. It's a little cheeky approach, but what they told us is that they have a hotline that we can call. "We" being law enforcement. And on every complaint, dial and give the address. But you may not know exactly where the address is because your, you know, your smell or different things. So it's a huge waste of resources. And so the 984, knowing where they are so that there's a registry for law enforcement, will really cut down on what is the problem? Is the problem, we know it's not the recreational side. There are 14 and we just did an annual report. They're operating under the law. These 984, they're unknown. And the ones that were before the 984, the 1,749, OHA does not determine whether or not they forfeited their license if they stopped growing. So all you would have to do is just say, I'm not gonna apply for a license, a renewal this year. And they're gonna say, thank you, okay. But there's no checking to make sure that they then in fact stop growing. So that's the question that we need to answer because the state is unable to. Mostly from a, yes, it's offsetting costs that the state should be providing, but from a public safety and from a responsiveness to the community perspective, I think it makes sense.
The question that I was trying to get at was, now this seems like, almost like, then you, and this is lumping you in with law enforcement, that you are taking on something that actually isn't under your purview then, right? You're concerned about something that isn't necessary by the system for you to actually care about, right?
Yes and no. So medical marijuana, under our regulations, needs to follow the same regulations in terms of land use, which is the county's.
Okay, so that's the part. So that's where it gets so many.
Yep, it does. And at the same time, when we go to a property to make sure that they are abiding, it would be complaint-driven. I mean, we're not trying to go and just knock on doors and be heavy-handed. But it's clear that there are individuals who feel impacted and we can't answer the question of, are they legal or are they not? And we do hear that we are overproducing marijuana in the state of Oregon. Where is that coming from? I'm not, it's not coming from the 14 that are licensed. Is it coming from the 984 that are on the medical side? We don't know. So when we go to make sure that they are abiding by the regulations, the same as the recreational side does, we don't know how many plants they should have. We don't know what they are licensed or if they're licensed.
But the hotline would have told you that, right? So you, as long as you, I mean, you can get ahold of the hotline and then you can.
But the first question is, what is the address to call the hotline with? So we get a call from a neighbor and they say, there is a profound smell or a lot of traffic or some sort of an impact. Now, in a radius, we need to try to determine where that's coming from. And we don't have the right to go on a property because that's just, I mean, that's not what you do unless you have probable cause that something's occurring. So the resource now of trying to figure out which one of those properties, are they licensed? And, which is great once we can start a registry. But my question to OHA, if we can call the hotline and get the information, why not just let us know where they are so that we can have them be on a register that's a legal registry? It protects them as a licensee and it really assists law enforcement to not be wasting resources sitting on a hotline trying to figure out which one of these addresses is licensed. And if none of them are. And if none of them are, now, we need to go in and find out which one is causing an issue. And then, is it four plants? Is it eight? Are they growing hemp? I mean, it really, there's a lot of detail in terms of what that might mean.
I'm sure it's a trust issue.
This is a philosophical question also, but I watched the, you know, the meeting that you had with, when you, two weeks ago, when you had the reports...
Right.
...out from the legal grows, and odor seemed to be the issue. Do you feel that odor is a public safety issue? And should we be spending this much time on it? And I know this goes back to, again, these are dictates from On High about timing and replace, and I guess odor falls into that, but...
Sure. So, the question for us is, in Deschutes County, we put forward with a marijuana advisory committee that recommended to us regulations, and the industry was on that committee. One of the things that you should not be able, in a large scale, in Deschutes County, is smell the potency of marijuana. That was a consensus that, in order for this industry to be welcome, legalized, and roll out, that was something that they did not appeal, and that is part of our regulations. So, when people are impacted by smell, is that something that is a public safety hazard? No. Is that part of our regulations for land use? Yes. So, it was one of the consensus ideas that they came together and said, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna say that this is something that, there are ways that you can mitigate that, and from a neighbor-to-neighbor perspective, from a large-scale grow, they felt that it was something that they'd be willing to do. So, no, it's not public safety, but yes, it would be against county code regulations.
I'm gonna change tack here.
Okay.
I know that mental health has been a big part of your work at the county level. What do you think the future holds for mental health resources at the county as our population continues to grow? And it seems that more and more people with mental health issues are taking refuge or housing in the county.
So, first and foremost, I think that our statewide system, and again, we operate as agents of the state, so we provide service, and we are the mental health authority as counties. So, the system, in my opinion, is completely fragmented, and it's more, we've developed different systems and created a system of care that has been piecemeal, not, if we were to design the system today, would it look like what we have? The answer is absolutely not. So, there's an initiative happening right now that's starting with our children's system of care. There are 12 people that have been asked to come together, and it's led by MAMI, the National Alliance for the Mentally Ill. And so, it allows the ability for us to totally look at the system and redesign it in a way that gets us to the outcomes that we want. It's what services do we need in order to meet the needs of the community, not what services do we have today, and then how do we fit the community into it? It's critical, because we did the same thing in 2013, looking at the public health system. Public health system in Oregon, we had big pockets of the state that was not able to respond to a public health crisis. And so, at the very minimum, we needed to make sure that everywhere in the state of Oregon had the same level of those foundational capabilities to meet a community's needs. So, it's taking what we learned in that process and applying it to the mental health system. So, it's a toe in the water, which is starting with our children's system, but I can't think of a better place to start. So, that work is ongoing. Then, the next piece is, how does the county respond when there are a lot of changes within the system? So, you will probably have seen St. Charles Family Care and others getting into providing care. For the county is, we need to recognize that the system is growing, and that with the Medicaid population and the coordinated care organizations that we have now, which is one in four in Deschutes County, has provided service through Medicaid. How do we make sure that the county is in the right swim lane, providing service, and not trying to provide service that others can provide? So, in answer to what will it look like going into the future, we are right now identifying areas in which we need to strengthen what we do and we do best, while working in coordination with others in the community that provides service. So, we're not duplicating, but we are strengthening, like, we handle the SPMI, the Significant Precipistic Mentally Ill. That core group of individuals can be incredibly disruptive in a, just your standard clinic environment, you know, really needing to, for us to be able to bring them in an environment that meets their needs, not necessarily just your standard clinicians. So, that's an area in which the county really provides great levels of service, and that's where the hospital and other providers want to see us providing service. So, you'll see some adjustments. We won't probably be doing quite as much of your lower-level, you know, entry-level type of less acute mental health needs, but certainly strengthening those higher-level, more acute. The other place that we're strengthening is the crisis intervention work. And so, we have a forensic team that now is working, we have crisis intervention teams, which work with law enforcement, but we have a forensic diversion team, what used to be called a jail diversion, to where we're actually getting people out of the system, the emergency room in the jail, and getting them into other parts of the community. And that has been, we touch maybe the same person two or three times in a day, but that forensic team knows the individuals, they know how to help them be well and be safe, and also help the community too with livability. And there can be some fear around that, which is not good for the client or for, you know, I'm thinking of the downtown challenges that people talk about. But most important, we're looking at bringing on a crisis respite center that also has a sobering station. It would be the only one on this side of the mountain. And that's 23-hour care, 24-hour is a, it's a different level of service. But this really is getting an individual in crisis, off the street, into a safe environment, get them some, you know, triage into the right level of service. And if that means detox, or if that means maybe working with Sage View or Brooks over in Redmond, it's an entry point that's humane, and that is welcoming, and that serves the needs of a part of our population that really has been underserved.
You're mentioning a lot about the side of existing mental health, and just having, you know, gone through the recent school shootings. I'm curious about your thoughts on the preventative side, and especially with youth in schools.